I'd like to call the work session order February 10th, 2025. Uh, Cady Clerk, check the role.
Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Gillis is absent.
Thank you. Um, all eyes are on us for discussion only, no action taken. We have two items on the agenda. Would like you to remind council that staff will be pausing every so often to answer any questions. First item out is the municipal judge who's going to talk about executive summary. Please introduce yourself to the public.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm Andrew Delgado. I am the presiding judge of the Goodyear Municipal Court. This is Crystal Wayland. Uh, she is the court administrator. We're going to be providing the state of the court address. Uh, so as council is aware, we previously did submit a full executive report for your review. Uh, we are going to limit this presentation to fiscal year 2024. We're going to be highlighting uh some notable issues.
Sorry, Your Honor, your keyboard's not cooperating.
There you go.
So the court performance objectives as well council tasked me with are in the executive summary, but I will be mentioning one of those objectives. Uh, I'll take this opportunity to go and report on that particular objective. So let's talk about some operating highlights in terms of charge filings. Uh, fiscal year 2024, we had thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four. Uh, of those, uh, misdemeanor non-traffic of one thousand six hundred and eighteen. Domestic violence, six hundred and twenty-four. DUIs, one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven. The criminal traffic is at two thousand or was it two thousand one hundred and forty-two? Uh, civil traffic, six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two, and local non-criminal ordinances, eight sixty-seven, protective orders, three seventy-four. So we have continued to increase in both case and charge filing rates based on the last three averages. The calendar year 2024 total case filings were eight thousand three hundred and sixty-two, and that is a hundred and thirty-two percent of the previous three-year case total average. So this is the highest number uh in the past fifteen calendar years. The charge filings were a hundred and fifteen percent of fiscal year twenty-one through fiscal year twenty-three. And just to clarify, uh, the case filings can be viewed as representing an individual defendant or an individual case. Whereas the charge filings are total charges that are filed against a defendant, which can vary from case to case, obviously. So you see there on the PowerPoint, there's actually a copy of an ATTC or a portion of it, the Arizona Traffic Ticket and Complaint. So when we speak of charges, you can see that there can be a single defendant who has multiple charges uh on the complaint. So again, both of the categories have increased and are trending to continue to increase now. While the statistical data published for fiscal year twenty-three ranks Goodyear number twelve statewide uh in municipal court filings. To appreciate the caseload the court is handling, it's important to consider the type of cases that are being filed in our court. For example, a civil traffic case can typically be handled through some semi-automated process where criminal misdemeanors are typically going to require several court settings before they're completed. I don't know if you remember last year, the last report I had or made to council, I had brought it to council's attention that with respect to DUI charges, our court was ranked number eight in the state, right behind the city of Tucson. So we had an extensive amount of those. So DUI cases, I believe arguably are the most involved in complicated case types that our courts adjudicate. So after the court ranked comparative numbers for filing with our surrounding courts, we discovered that while the Goodyear Court is ranked below some of our surrounding courts, in case filings, we have a higher misdemeanor and uh criminal traffic caseload volume than every other West Valley court. So our filings reflect that fifty-one point six percent of the caseload involve misdemeanors and criminal traffic matters. So this number is significant because over the half of the cases we're addressing are potentially the most complicated and time-consuming cases. Uh, we process a high percentage again of DUI cases, which can require numerous calendar settings, and also typically require several post-adjudicated proceedings regarding jail, mandatory counseling, interlock compliance, financial obligations, all those things we have to address before we can actually close a case. And just to mention, our surrounding courts are nowhere near that percentage in terms of the misdemeanors and criminal traffic matters. So even with the implementation of expedited continuances, uh, we're still not complying with our DUI and misdemeanor time standards, although we've made some improvements, uh, especially with our DUI cases. So the court uh has not been in a position, I believe, to effectively handle the volume, a volume that we have, but at the end of two thousand twenty-four, uh, and into this year, the court has been able to make some significant foundational changes that we anticipate are going to move those numbers in the right direction. So if you recall, last fiscal year, council approved the position of the court hearing officer, uh, in particular to help address the court's growth, case volume, and to ensure consistency with judicial coverage. So the court was able to have that court hearing officer in place by September of two thousand twenty-four. The court also sworn that court hearing officer is a pro temp, which allows the court to use that hearing officer to adjudicate criminal matters. We recently just sent uh our court hearing officer to the new judge orientation for limited jurisdiction judges to ensure that she in fact had that latest training with respect to both the criminal and civil cases. And that is an intensive three-week training. Um, it's very, it's very thorough. So in our previous state of the court address, we advised council that after we finished evaluating the courtroom operations to address compliance issues, I would be evaluating that customer service division, process and procedures to ensure compliance and efficiency. Uh, the last time I was here, we spent a lot of time talking about court operations. So the civil court hearing officer is a civil expert. Um, and I was able to delegate that task to her. And our hearing officer spent approximately a week evaluating the process and procedures of our customer service division. She also visited a neighboring municipal court whose civil division is essentially paperless. Uh, that was to shadow their civil traffic case processing protocols and to consider potential future processes for our court as we start moving in that direction. So the process resulted in a recommendation list of approximately fifteen changes. Uh, court leadership met to review the proposed changes to consider it in our practice in our court. And some of the suggested changes involved form revisions, scanning of civil traffic proof, uh, expanded use of email, uh, revision of procedures, transition from paper civil traffic to electronic civil traffic, case filing retention in our customer service division. So these policies, procedures, and the training necessary to implement the changes are in progress as of January. The other significant change that we made uh as a result of bringing on the hearing officer was a redesign of our courtroom calendars. So this was extremely imperative to addressing our compliance issues and our time standards. Prior to this time, the court was limited in what it could do in handling the volume of cases uh that were being processed by the court. But in December of two thousand twenty-four, uh, the court expanded the courtroom dockets and can now run two dedicated courtrooms five days a week. So that is a huge accomplishment. The expansion alleviates the burden not only on staff, but uh it benefits the court's ability to expedite impromptu protective orders, alleviates congestion when you have unplanned issues, um, and just allows the court to increase that docket availability to avoid backlog and negative impact on our time standards. So currently, the court and the state have agreed that the court will be able to expand one more calendar setting per week, requiring the state's presence before the state is of the opinion that they may not have the appropriate resources anymore to cover the dockets. All right. Um, and I should mention that staff seems to be very happy with that court hearing officer. I'm very happy. Uh, in particular, and utmost importance is her ability and willingness to build relationships with the staff there. She's doing an excellent job. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Crystal. Uh, she's going to be discussing the CIP project. She took the lead on the project, has been there dealing with us day to day. Uh, this expansion project has been a challenge. Um, she's done an amazing job. I would probably consider her uh probably a superintendent. Yeah, I think she could definitely be a superintendent by now. She knows more about plumbing electricity than probably anybody in here.
Thank you, Judge. Mayor and council, as you know, we are going through temporary uh facility improvements as part of a CIP project. This is just to enhance the current space in our facility, as you know, was not, we didn't move in with the intention of it being a permanent home for the court. And with our growth that the judge has talked about with our case activity, we needed to create some options for our customers. Some of the if, um, images were chosen for significant reasons. If you look at the upper left corner, that's a view down the hallway to the courtrooms. Those chairs, there's fifteen lobby seats to, to seat our customers if they're not in the courtroom. And this includes what's going on in the courtrooms and anyone waiting for service at our transaction counters and waiting to see a prosecutor since they're co-located in our facility. So obviously with our volume, fifteen public seats is not sufficient. Um, so we have part of this project is to create a north lobby seating area and a south lobby seating area with probably capacity to uh seat sixty customers. So a great improvement, and all we were able to do is create a pop-out in the landscape that was on the face of the court uh footprint. And uh, our staff has grown. When we moved into the facility in two thousand and eight, I think we had a staff of close to nine. Now we have twenty-one. And we had the same break room that used to be the old E-session room, which then we didn't have a conference room. And um, so we um gave up some parking spaces in our secured lot to see that bottom-left image to create an adequate uh break room for court personnel. They cannot wait to get in there. You can see we'll have enough seating. Um, so we're very excited about that. Also, the back end, that middle image um is creating cubicle space for extra workstations. We'll have capacity to add two more workstations in the future as we um intend to continue to be in the facility temporarily. Uh, but we are able to add capacity for more personnel as well as a second courtroom transaction window. So right now we're operating two courtrooms with a makeshift transaction counter. Um, so we are going to have a permanent counter installed in this project, which is what you see with that tape there. Um, and so we've been very creative, very collaborative with the um project partners so that we can create some capacity and some better customer waiting and uh creature comforts for our employees. So everyone's very excited. The break room is, is the, the current excitement in the office. Thank you, Judge.
That's it?
Yes.
All right. All right. So um, I'm going to talk a little bit about the objective in my contract. Uh, as you are aware, my court performance objective contract goal number three required that within one year I initiate action planning and participate, uh, participation by the court in the city's Gallup Q-12 Employee Engagement Initiative. Uh, that was something that was placed in my contract. So just to backtrack a little bit, uh, within a couple of months of coming on board, my supervisors and myself started working on a book. It was called, entitled, The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. And that was in an effort, not that we were dysfunctional, but that was in an effort to unify the leadership. And we dedicated regular meetings uh to work on that task. We spent an expensive amount of time working on the concept that leadership had to be united uh in order to build a positive culture and promote teamwork amongst our staff. I also had individual one-on-ones with all the employees. And those interviews were geared towards learning about staff as individuals, their backgrounds, their families, just so that I could get to know the individuals on a more personal level. I did express to staff during that time that I thought it was important that they work on defining uh our mission and our vision as opposed to me imposing on them what I believed was my mission. So early on, we did do some group activities in an effort to start that process. I also consulted with HR, who assisted me with ideas and resources. So in April of two thousand twenty-four, myself and Crystal participated in the Boston Coach Training, as well as the supervisors. All the supervisors have completed that training as well. After our Q-12 results, uh, in August, I asked HR to take a more intentional, direct role in assisting the court with addressing the Q-12 results and an action plan. Uh, and court staff had identified and completed the Q-12 action planning on the following engagement questions, which was, "At work, my opinion seems to count, and the mission or purpose of my organization makes me feel important." So, you know, wise men once said, "Without a vision, you're going to perish." And uh, from those Q-12 results, it was apparent to me that it was time that we developed those, that mission and that vision statement, and through a series of additional meetings. Uh, and with Shay Lynn's assistance, she was very active in that process, uh, the court staff created their own vision and mission statements. I don't know if I can read that. So, read that for me.
The mission, the new mission of the Goodyear Municipal Court is the Goodyear Municipal Court serves the community with professionalism, empathy, and competence each and every day. And our staff's vision is we strive to inspire public trust and confidence through our core values and teamwork.
I'm in trouble. I can't see far, I can't see close. That was the vision of the mission statements they came up with. Um, further, to ensure that employees know that their opinions count, we requested human resources team to conduct lean on, uh, lean one-on-one interviews with all our staff members. The court set the time aside for all staff and leadership to participate in this process where HR facilitates the employees sharing their individual job duties, ideas, and their wish list of items our staff would change if given free rein. Um, so leadership as a team had regular meetings with HR, with the HR team, and we are now in the process of creating an impact effort matrix. Where we're going to actually be addressing the employees' wish list, so to speak. Um, so this has been an amazing valuable experience. The court has fully adopted the Q-12 Employee Engagement Initiative. It's an ongoing engagement project uh as of January, and the court would like to thank Shay Lynn, Tim, Sabrina uh for their time and effort. Uh, it's been a very valuable experience, and thanks as well to Lyman for, for loaning us that team. Okay, let's talk a bit about community engagement. Uh, Crystal and I are really on the same page on this, and we think it's important to serve our legal community. Um, and we're both very active in that. Uh, but equally, if not more important, I think is to serve our surrounding community. And while all community service is important, I really appreciate being able to serve our youth. That's a focus for me. And so since we've last seen you, um, the court has made itself available to serve organizations in and out of our city. And the following are just some of the um events that we participated in. The municipal court one-on-one presentation to educate the Goodyear citizens about judicial branch in the Goodyear city. Our court, our court administrator is currently a mentor with Desert Star Elementary School. We had a mock trial in April where we hosted students from a local homeschool group called Classic Conversations Program. They had their opposing team come down from Prescott, and we conducted two mock trials. Uh, attended a BCL event for STEM students to submit a summit for development of skills for students. This included interview skills, presentations, professional skill building. Uh, Crystal and I were both judges there. In March twenty twenty-four, uh, the Hope Fest, a Veterans Lift-Up Resource Event and Bed Building Service Project with Sleep and Heavenly Peace. Uh, of course, the Austin Peck Memorial Golf Tournament. Couldn't pass that one up. Did pizza with a professional, so we attended lunch with students who were working on the professional develop skills, um, preparing to enter the workforce at various capacities. We had two different groups of students uh who shadowed, observed, and had lunch with the judges. We had a group come out in February, another one out in December. The American Heritage Troop Visit, that was December of two thousand twenty-four. So we had local girls, uh, troop visitors. They earned their justice badge uh by making a visit to the court. So this included some question and answers with team members and overview the role of judicial branch in the state of Arizona, discussions about what our day is like, and a meet and greet. Um, they were also had an impromptu trial that they put on with the court uh hearing officer. So last year, uh, we left you with some goals. We left you with some initiatives that the court aspired to address and accomplish. Uh, those goals and initiatives and their status are referenced in the executive summary. If you look at the last slide here, you'll see that, uh, that is staff's goals, uh, as well as my contract goals that are combined for two thousand twenty-five. So the ones in red are ones that are in process or may have already been completed. So I will point out that we intend to continue to evaluate the court processes and procedures to ensure the court remains compliant uh with all mandates. The time standards have been an area that the court has been trying to get in compliance since I came on board. However, um, I believe with the support that we've gotten with respect to the court hearing officer and additional employees, we've got a good foundation, and I think that we're going to be able to turn that around. Uh, we're going to continue to evaluate those excess numbers of DUIs and misdemeanor filings, including potential need to add resources to manage those caseloads. And continuing our efforts with automation, that's going to be an ongoing effort. Uh, in particular, our courtroom forms, fingerprint issues, uh, fingerprint pads. Uh, and of course, employee engagement. Uh, we're going to continue to work on that team culture, utilize HR, and implement that lean impact effort matrix, um, which is going to be interesting. We started addressing all those wish lists. Uh, we've actually got a lot of them that we've already taken care of. So, and lastly, um, growth is going to continue. Uh, there's no way around that. There's no way around that. It's going to happen, and I think we just need to keep our radar on potential facility planning, which I think is to be considered in fiscal year twenty-seven for facilities. Part of the strategic plan. That's what I have for you.
All right. With that, open up for questions. Who wants to go up first? Okay, go ahead, Laura.
Thank you for your report and the written report, and certainly this report. I was thinking, as you were presenting, Crystal, that I don't think we'd recognize the place now if we went in there. It looks like you're making such substantial changes. And it was always an awkward space anyway, so good for you for really having to be creative.
Thank you.
And I'm really not surprised to hear that your misdemeanor and criminal traffic counts are so high because we have a very active police department, and they're doing exactly what we want them to do. And so, I think that was a big impetus for you getting that hearing officer because there's a lot of work coming.
Absolutely, and it's made a huge difference. Thank you very much.
Yes. Question about staffing, you certainly have done a lot of work, build, team-building and employee engagement. Have you found that your turnover has stabilized?
I would say yes. I think only one individual has left.
Only one team member has left for a promotional opportunity outside of the city.
Everybody else is there.
Good, good.
And I intend to.
Come a long way. Good. Appreciate you stabilizing the court in terms of the staff.
Absolutely.
It was just, you had such tremendous turnover, always training and trying to do that, so that's really good news. And in your report that you gave us, there was just, there was some information about specialty courts, the homeless, the mental health, and that was a big part of your interview process and things that we had discussed with you. Would you briefly just cover your findings on that?
And are you speaking specifically to the report? We put a report in the, yes.
Yes, but about the homeless and some of the, I guess, the challenges of what you can't.
Right. So, it was actually Crystal and the new court hearing officer because she was the mental health judge over in Glendale that contacted Glendale to see if we could somehow team up, maybe enter into an IGA with them, and to bring along potentially that mental health court or that homeless population that we've been concerned about. What we found in that process was that it was difficult, if not impossible, for them to tell us they could or they couldn't do it until we could give them numbers. Because we didn't have a solid number to give them of that particular population, it was difficult for them to say, "Yes, we can accommodate you, no, we cannot accommodate you." So, our plan was to get access to an application, is it Mercy Care?
Mercy Care.
Where we can actually run defendants when they come in. If they come in and we see some type of mental health issue, that we believe is a mental health issue, we can run them on this app, make a determination whether they in fact are seriously mentally ill and are case managed, which is typically the requirement, in particular for the mental health. And we're going to start documenting that so that we got some numbers, so we can go back, give them some solid numbers to see if we can even make that work. Because there's so many pieces to that. I understand as well, you know, we would need a public defender, we would probably need another prosecutor, because even that, even though we're in an IGA, they still have to participate. They got to represent those defendants individually. The prosecutors got to play their role as well.
So, our numbers don't justify that at this point, is what you're?
Our goal is to look at it for about a period of six months.
Okay.
But right now, we don't have those numbers for those specialty courts.
Okay.
But we're going to take a look at it again and start running individuals so that we can get a better, more concrete.
Wonderful. And the Veterans Court is still working out well?
Working well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. It's like been a D-year or so. I appreciate all you guys' hard work. It was good to see some of the numbers come down in certain areas, like domestic violence, and then also, I know we, I think I went to the MAD award ceremony a couple of years back, and we were the number-one city for, one of our officers for DUI apprehensions and things like that.
Absolutely.
I know we're highly trained, and we're out there on the streets trying to keep you guys busy as well. So, yes, no, I appreciate all the hard work, like Laura said as well, with the court getting creative with that and making sure that's a better, more permanent location for staff to be able to do as much possible that they can. So, thank you for that, and I appreciate your leadership with trying to prevent the turnover and make the court a great place to work and a great place to make a difference in the city as well. So, thank you for that. And I really appreciate all your community outreach, too. That's really great to see you in the community, and I don't think our last judges were as focused on the community service, really. So, I appreciate you being out there, helping the community, and maybe getting some future judges, learning what that's like in the future, too. So, thank you for that. So, I appreciate all your hard work and looking forward to any of the specialty courts or your data in the future and the next presentation when you guys are ready for that, too. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think as soon as we get those numbers, we'll be able to evaluate those specific groups. But as we reported previously, the other numbers just weren't there yet.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you for your report. I just have a couple of quick questions. Do you have enough room for all of your staff? Are you able to give them a desk and a phone or, I mean, to go from five to twenty-one is just huge because you don't, you didn't get a bigger building.
Vice Mayor.
Center room?
Thank you for the question.
Yes, the new workstations that are being built will provide a permanent workstation for, we had, when we did our most recent hire, we have one team member that is showing extreme adaptability at a temporary workstation, and so, she will get moved over into the new workstation, and then we will have capacity to add two more team members in our current space.
All right. But after you add two more, is that it? Are you?
That is it until we get creative once again or identify where our future home will be. But we, I am thinking ahead already with the supervisors about what we can do if we continue to grow at the rate we are growing at.
Good. Well, I appreciate you putting additional staff on because that was an issue as well. But the biggest issue was is that we weren't having enough court dates, and that's why we weren't having the numbers. Because this was before you came on, Judge. I'm not saying during your tenure, because you have certainly turned that court around, and we appreciate it so much. Your prosecutor, you said that he's available or she's available three days a week. What do they do the other two?
Well, the dockets that I'm referring to.
Can we answer that one?
Sure.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we have three prosecutors to handle.
You have three, okay.
We have three. But about fifty percent of their time is available to actually be in court. The rest of their time is spent reviewing cases, victim outreach, appeals, motions, and other administrative tasks. So, typically, a prosecutor has about fifty percent of their time to be actually in court, and then they're doing the other court prep outside of the court time.
Okay, I misunderstood. I was thinking they only work three days a week. But then Crystal said she wants sixty or sixty-five seats out for all these people that are going to be waiting to be served and to see a prosecutor. And I thought, well, we better have a prosecutor on staff available five days a week if someone comes in and needs to see a prosecutor.
There are prosecutors in the building five days a week, but the days available to be in court are the three days.
Good. Well, that's wonderful. Well, we really appreciate all that you're doing, and we want to be known as a very following-the-law city. I mean, we've seen it go from a little, small town to something very big and busy. We have a lot of activities now that offer after, not after hours, because it's not like they're selling after hours, but after an event, they have other places to go and dance and do other things. And so, we just want to make sure that our folks are safe on the streets, and we appreciate all the prosecution that you're doing and the follow-up. And is your technology finally getting up to where you need it now? Because we did not have enough of it before.
Vice Mayor, yes, we are innovating left and right. So, and the team, I think it really has helped now that we have the stability of staff, that they're able to get into some of these projects. And so, yes, we've got our scanners in place, and everyone is utilizing those. That was one of the big asks before, that we didn't have that technology. So, we made that big one-time purchase, and we are.
I'm so glad to hear that because it's just important. If we're going to give them a nice place to work, they've got to have the tools to do it.
Absolutely.
And technology is rapidly changing daily, and I'm sure y'all see a new program every so often.
We sure do.
That the court are using.
Yeah, we had to implement some structural, some infrastructure. So, we've been talking, you know, back and forth here about virtual proceedings, but we need to get that implemented right before we can move on to any of that, so.
Oh, sure. Yeah, no, I understand that part, but I just.
It took a bit, but we got it now.
Thank you. Thank you. We want to be as forward-thinking as we possibly can because we're not going to shrink in Goodyear. We're only going to grow. So, thank you both very much, and thank your staff. We appreciate all that they're doing.
Thank you very much. We will pass that along.
Trey?
Yes, I just wanted to echo a lot of the things that the Vice Mayor was just saying. Thank you for your written report. Thank you for this presentation. Also, thank you for showing me around the building several weeks back, and just appreciate, you know, there's a lot of growing pains in a lot of places in the city, but appreciate you guys making do with the temporary makeshift facility that you've been operating out of. So, just want to thank you, your staff, and for the work you've been doing.
You're on, you're on.
I can't see it. Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you also for the tour that we were able to have that certainly was enlightening for us. But also, there was mention of visiting another court, and they had paperless processing. Is that some type of software or something different?
Councilmember Beckles, they are just utilizing the technology that is available to courts. And so, you can scan into our case management system, and so, we are wanting to learn from this court. Our processing of cases is the same, so, you know, we want to work, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. So, we, Judge Bastine visited and came back and said, "I've seen how they do it. This is what I recommend that we need to do." And so, those are the processes that we're going through right now.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And I think we're moving in that direction with respect to the civil cases.
We sure are.
Great. And one other question, you mentioned that the employees had an opportunity to provide some input. Was there any particular theme that they brought forth, or was it all over the board?
It's a huge list, about a three-page list that, of their wishes that they wanted to do. It just ranged from technology to changing calendars to, it's all over. But we're going to organize, well, organize ready. We're going to put in that matrix, and then we're just going to start addressing them.
Well, it's hard to add. I mean, very good discussion for the council here and good input, and I appreciate all your hard work. The only question I have that wasn't asked is, you know, my pet peeve is the criminal, you know, speeding. Are you seeing any decrease on that? I know the police are out there working heavily on that. Was it, one of the officers told me the other day they caught somebody on Litchfield Road doing eighty-eight miles an hour, which isn't good. I don't know how you're not hitting anybody doing eighty-eight on Litchfield Road. But with that being said, how's your caseload on that looking like?
We're busy. When it comes to the criminal traffic, we are busy. The numbers are high. But they're out enforcing, so I'm assuming at some point they're going to get the message that they need to slow down, or they're going to get charged. So, but in terms of, if you're asking me the numbers, it's relatively high.
And Mayor, if I may, because I know you appreciate data as much as I do, out of that fifty-one point six percent that was covered by Judge Delgado in our earlier slide, thirty-four point one of that encompasses criminal traffic speed. The next closest court, their numbers, if we're looking at Surprise, for example, who is ranked tenth, and we are twelfth, only six point two percent of their caseload versus our thirty-four point one percent.
Are you seeing the same people back, or once they, are they getting the message once, once justice is dispensed, so to speak?
Typically, not the same individuals. Does it happen on occasion? Yes. I wouldn't say that it's the general practice, though. Not everybody that's getting pulled over obviously lives in Goodyear, right? So, again, that's an enforcement issue.
Well, I'm hoping somehow with your efforts and the police efforts that we can slow some of that traffic down.
Mr. Mayor, we had, if in the prosecutor's office, had run those numbers on recidivism about six months, six months ago. It's about one percent, so it's very low as far as we're at P-defenders.
So, we're just keeping new people, catching new people all the time. Well, listen, I appreciate your effort. I please everything that you're doing, and I really appreciate you had just one leave, and that was for a promotion, because we have had some issues on turnover there. So, I really appreciate everything that you're doing. So, thank you.
Great.
All right, with that, we've got another one coming up. Last item, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-six, Community Development Block Grants. Yeah, please introduce yourself for the public.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Christina Panatescu, Community Partnerships Program Manager for the City of Goodyear, and it is time to begin planning our CDBG fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six allocation. Tonight, we will cover key points regarding the national objectives and city priorities from the Consolidated Plan and the constraints on action plan activities, including what I think is a very exciting recommendation for your feedback. A consolidated plan provides the framework for use of community development block grant funding, and it gets updated every five years unless it's amended. And it gets implemented, then, through these annual action plan, where we specify projects called activities that must benefit low-to-moderate-income Goodyear households or neighborhoods. And for an additional perspective, eighty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars as an annual income would be eighty percent of area median income for a family of four. According to HUD's data, there are approximately twenty-nine thousand, five hundred people or thirty-one percent of Goodyear residents who would be eligible to benefit from this opportunity. Also, it could be a project that's in an area where the census for that is low to moderate income at greater than fifty percent. And so, you can see that as the shaded in yellow-orange areas in the map to the right. Also, another way for an activity to achieve the national objective is to primarily serve individuals who are presumed to be eligible based on being low-income, and that's because they belong to a particular category of individuals, such as those listed on the left on the slide, abused children, battered spouses, the elderly, et cetera. We call these special populations when we're planning and reporting. So, in addition to serving low and moderate-income people, it also has to fit into one of the following eligible priority areas from our consolidated plan. And you can see here that when we establish the priorities, preference was given to community facilities and improvements, along with public services, and of course, program administration, although the funds could be used for attainable and sustainable housing or economic development if an opportunity presented itself. So, in May two thousand and twenty, council provided direction for staff to pursue CDBG entitlement status, meaning the city would receive our own direct entitlement or allocation of CDBG funds rather than competing for them through the Maricopa Urban County. And in two thousand and twenty-one, we submitted our consolidated plan and the first-year action plan, which included this project, our first CDBG entitlement project, removing and replacing existing streetlights with improved LED fixtures and adding bollard lighting along a neighborhood pathway to improve safety in north subdivisions. And then, the next year, in May two thousand and twenty-two, following a process like this, we included the renovation project at the Child Development Center for New Life Center as our activity. And those renovations brought the staff out from behind closed doors and gave teens and infants more comfortable space and a secluded space to hang out in. In twenty-three, the city contracted. In '23, the city contracted for improvements to Palmentier Park in the historic Goodyear neighborhood, increasing the shade and making the playground more accessible, ensuring a high standard of Goodyear's quality of life is offered on an inclusive basis. And we're about to begin procurement for the Litchfield Road Streetlight Project, which will add up to 17 streetlights, filling gaps along Litchfield Road in front of historic Goodyear neighborhood. So there's a lot of things we don't know in the world of grants right now. But we also don't know what our FY '26 entitlement is going to be. We still need to be planning now. And in order to meet our statutory deadlines, we, as we have in the past, we're working with an estimate and it's based on the past two years. And when we make our recommendation, we're proposing it in the term of a percentage so that it can increase or decrease depending on what the actual entitlement winds up being. Whatever projects we select to do need to be able to grow or shrink with that surplus or shortfall. So we are using $397,718 for planning purposes. And I say this each year because it's true, but CDBG is a very complex grant program and it requires extensive administration and oversight related to complying with federal regulations, promoting the principles of fair housing, assessing neighborhood conditions, and the need for public services, as well as establishing application and monitoring systems. And so for this reason, we intend to continue to reserve the full 20% allowable for CDBG administration. That leaves an estimated balance of $318,175 available for activities that meet the national objectives I talked about before and align with our consolidated plan. So, given the anticipated award amount and the administrative burdens that accompany these funds, it does remain in the city's interest to focus on a single capital community improvement-type project with budgets that maximize our allocation. A variety of projects, suggestions emerged during our initial public hearing and conversations with department directors. However, some didn't meet the national objective of serving lower and moderate income individuals. For example, we revisited an ambulance for Station 184. However, the first due area for that station does not meet the area benefit criteria. Other suggestions were too small to maximize available resources, putting future entitlements at risk because we have expenditure thresholds that we have to meet. For example, we considered the sidewalk improvements and accessibility ramps, but it's, we couldn't put together a project feasible to utilize the full amount of the allocation. And we looked into sewer line projects, but planned activities fall into the category of maintenance and so they would not be eligible. We did get a proposal during our public process to help meet an objective from Phase One of our Community Neighborhood Services Master Plan, which relates to childcare during non-traditional hours. And that proposal came from the Southwest Valley YMCA, which is located on Litchfield Road and Thomas. And we do have Blake Zikafus, the Executive Director of the Southwest Valley Y, and Garrett Brolsimah, who's a Vice President of Operations for the Valley of the Sun YMCA, and also Kirsten Gray, the Vice President of Childcare for Valley of the Sun United Way. And I want to thank them for being here tonight and their interest in expanding the services for Goodyear residents. So in 2019, the Southwest Valley Y created an early learning center using available space in the building to meet growing community need for quality and affordable childcare. Many of the children enrolled in the early learning and school-age childcare programs are foster children or attend using the Arizona Department of Economic Security, DES, childcare reimbursement authorizations. As was identified in community assessments conducted by the city, the Y also recognizes the need to have an affordable childcare option for working families in Goodyear. Currently, the early learning classrooms are located in large spaces original to the building that were retrofitted to serve as early learning classrooms. And to be able to serve all ages, six weeks to five years, they operate one infant room, a combination toddler room for one- and two-year-olds, and a combination preschool room for those who are age three to five. The mixed age group classrooms make it difficult to deliver age and developmentally appropriate instruction and to care for each child. The proposed FY '26 CDBG project is to construct dedicated classrooms for each group. In addition to providing high-quality spaces designated to meet the developmental and safety needs of younger children, this activity will result in increased licensed capacity for the Southwest Valley Y's early learning program, increasing their ability to serve 57 to 98 children. That's a 70% increase. And to further accommodate the expansion, additional teachers will be needed to be recruited and retained. This project presents an excellent opportunity to invest in an important resource for Goodyear's working family and conforms with the city's guiding principles for economic vitality and safe and vibrant, and a safe and vibrant community. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the FY '26 CDBG entitlement be allocated 20% of the city's total entitlement to program administration, 80% of the city's total entitlement to be passed through to the Southwest Valley YMCA as a sub-recipient for construction and equipment to expand the Southwest Valley YMCA's early learning center program with up to 15% of the city's total entitlement available for use on public services, such as teacher salaries. And so I look to you for feedback on this recommendation.
Go ahead, Brandon.
Thank you for the presentation. I could, quick questions. Give me some history on, did we finish all of the water lines in historic Goodyear? That's already, that's all done, correct?
I would defer to Public Works on that.
I was curious, when I was on CDAC, I know that was one of the main projects that we were finishing up. I was curious, did that, it finished?
But I don't know for sure. I.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, did we ever finish the pool upgrade over at the Loma with the CDAC or the CBG money?
I prefer the parks. We didn't use CDBG money for that.
We did it on our own? Okay. So we finished that, right? Haven't took a tour over there?
Here it comes, he's coming up.
It was not funded with CDBG.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. David Side, Deputy Director in the Parks and Recreation Department. As Christina alluded to, that project was not CDBG funded. However, that project is set to be completed by Memorial Day of the spring. So it'll be operational for the pool season.
Yeah, thank you. I know that was one of the potential uses for that money at some point. I was just curious for that one. So, okay. And then, no, I think this is a good use of it. I mean, I appreciate you looking into other options and things like that. I know most of the projects in the past have been infrastructure. So this is a little bit infrastructure, but also quality of life and it's those kind of buckets as well. And I know you mentioned the United Way. Is the, is this money going directly to the YMCA or is it going through the United Way?
If I said United Way, I misspoke. I'm sorry, Councilman. It should be Valley of the Sun YMCA.
Okay.
Who is the parent organization over Southwest Valley YMCA.
I was just curious. When I, as long as I go to the United Way, money would go through there. They would take 10% and then it would go to the nonprofit. So I was just verifying, they're getting all of that money, so. And then I know we're, kind of what we do with our budget coming up here is, I know we're doing construction. So that's a one-time dollar type thing that will get done. If we, we're going to put 15% of it towards teacher salaries, can the YMCA continue that forward? Or is it going to be a one-year and then they have to not be able to sustain it?
Right. Well, I would defer to the representatives from the Y, if you want to come up here.
I just want to make sure, it's not like a good program. I just don't want it to be a one-year.
Right.
And they're like, oh, that city of Goodyear didn't give us any more money. So now we're, we've got to shut down the project.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Garrett Brolsimah, Valley of the Sun YMCA. The answer to your question would be, we would expect to take on that cost moving forward after the first year of the funding, seeing that, expecting the increase of enrollment for the program and being subsidized either by direct pay from consumer or third-party funding, we would expect to pay those teacher salaries.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just want to make sure it's sustainable for you guys, too. So you have a great new building, but not, but not be able to use it.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you.
No, I appreciate it. And I was looking at your report, too. It looks like the majority of the population is foster, foster children, which is, it's just an interesting niche that that's what we're focusing on.
Yeah, I would say that we are a strong mix of foster families and then low-income families as well who receive either foster support, Department of Economic Security, or YMCA financial assistance as well.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. YMCA is a great resource here in Goodyear. So, yeah, thank you for bringing this to us and I'm glad we're able to, well, like everybody else is at a side, too. But it looks like that's where we're going to go, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're very proud to serve the community.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's all the questions I have. Now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Can CBDG funds be used for a senior center?
Depending on the actual activity, yes.
I would like you to consider looking into that because we do an IGA with Avondale for a senior center and our residents aren't using it like they would like to use it and they would like their own. And we have enough senior population in this city to justify doing that. We just have to figure out where to put it in that. So I have a question for the attorney now. So if we do do this for the YMCA, can we not give them the $250,000 a year we have to give them already? It's no, it's not just for the pool. It's for the administration of the YMCA because Awkwafria is in charge of taking care of the pool.
I believe those are not related subjects. The IGA for the pool has to do with the pool, the operations and maintenance, not for the childcare facilities.
For our $250,000 goes to the pool?
And the operations of the pool.
I misunderstood that because that's not what I was told when I came on council.
We can get more information for you.
Would you please, I'd like to know. Because I don't, I don't mind giving them another $350,000. We're already giving them $250,000. I mean, that's a lot of money to go to one nonprofit. Are they a nonprofit? Okay, to a nonprofit. Can you tell me, Christina, how many Goodyear residents go to this childcare center exactly? To the number from Goodyear?
Blake, Blake might know that.
Hi. Hello, Council. My name's Kirsten. I am Vice President of Childcare. Right now, we roughly serve about 35% of our enrollment is Goodyear residents. One of the key factors for that upon a needs analysis, which is one of my charges to do, is that citing the mixed age group classrooms because of some of the requirements for entering into kindergarten, some parents chose elsewhere. With that, we are currently doing a marketed, targeted marketing campaign within our Goodyear population. The rest of the residents that we serve actually primarily come from the Luke Air Force Base. So they're armed service members who are commuting in or out of the base and dropping off their children or from the Avondale border because Avondale does not have sufficient childcare on this end. Again, we are working very hard to target Goodyear residents with this expansion.
Okay, when you say 35%, how many children? Not, not a percentage. How many kids out of, you have 57 enrolled now?
So currently, our licensed capacity is 57. We have.
And how many do you have enrolled now?
30, 38? We currently have 38 and totally enrolled. Yes, and so part of the, we had a decline in enrollment based on the current infrastructure of the rooms. And so 35% of those, so I think it's approximately, I think we have 30, not approximately, can't have child approximately. 13 children are Goodyear residents.
13 children.
Yes. And so that was based on our current, most recent analysis, which was as of December 2025.
Okay.
24.
Okay. And you're actually licensed for 38 now or 57?
We are currently licensed for 57 in our, in our early learning program. Our total, yeah, our total license capacity is higher because we also serve school-age children, of which the majority do come from local elementary schools within the Goodyear city limits.
All right. And then, they did answer the question that if we do do the 15% salary, they're not going to come back and want 15% again from us? This is a one-time deal only?
Yes. One of the things that we've learned with the expansion of classrooms is the importance of hiring a qualified teacher who is local to that community to make sure that we can do the expansion. So we can open new rooms, but if we don't have a highly qualified teacher, it's a barrier. Right now, we are working strategically to identify teachers who live within each community to be hired and then after 12 months, we are fully enrolled and prepared to assume the salary.
Okay, thank you. I've been trying to find out exactly how many Goodyear people actually use that facility for years. And I always get a percentage, but it's never a number. You could say it's a percentage all you want and it could be three people.
Very true.
You know, so I just want to know that this is so important to our city. I want to make sure that our residents are getting the bulk of it.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, the other communities don't have childcare centers. I mean, they can do it if they want to, I'm sure. But I just want to be sure that we're using our dollars wisely for Goodyear residents.
I have much respect for that, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
I am so glad we took CDBG in-house because we've really done some amazing projects. And I'm very excited about this one. There's so much pressure on families to not only find but afford childcare. So I think this is going to be a great option. I know times that I've been in the Y or toured the Y, I have seen a lot of military families and I think that's an important population that we serve. As well as with the additional hours, I mean, there's medical professionals. There's certainly when you're entry level, law enforcement or fire, you're not making a ton of money. I mean, these are great, this is a great option. So I thank you for the research you've done. It's very thorough. I'm glad that the community had a lot of ideas, but you're right. You have to meet a certain criteria, a certain threshold. And I think this is a great project that'll be a benefit to our community.
Yes, I'm very familiar with the Y. I have toured it several times. I appreciate this project. I had the same question that Brandon had about one-time costs, but that was answered. That's all I have.
You know, I think this is a great project, especially for those that could use some help. And I'm glad you went through the process of identifying those that wouldn't quite fit. So I wish you luck on being able to get this one down in. And who knows with all the stuff that's going on in DC, whether any of that's going to affect what you're doing right now. It's all up in the air, so we'll see how all that kind of pans out. But with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. So let me just wrap up real quick and explain that the next steps are that these activities will be incorporated into a draft plan that will be available for a public comment from March 10th to April 10th. It will be coming back to you on March 24th for a public hearing at a regular meeting. And then again, on May 5th, after the public comment, we can just put it on consent unless there are any substantive changes so that you can adopt it. And I'll have it ready to, delivered to HUD by their deadline, which will hopefully be May 15th. But we'll find out when it is later.
Okay, thank you. Before we, before we close this meeting, we have a birthday girl in the audience right here, all right? And we have some bontinis right out there in the room on the outside. So grab some of those to get your little sugar fix before we go into the next meeting. We need, what, about 15 minutes? Okay?